All right. We will call this meeting to order. This meeting is being held in the council chambers, which is open for the public attendance and participation. The meeting will also be livestreamed for public viewing, but not participation at the link identified in the agenda. E-mailed comments sent and received by the city clerk at least 24 hours prior to the meeting were distributed to the city council prior to tonight. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Shaw.
Here.
Vice Mayor Kirchner.
Here.
Councilmember Boomgarden. Councilmember Espandola.
Here.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
All right. If you'll stand with us tonight, I will open us in prayer, and then Councilmember Boomgarden will lead us in the pledge. Our gracious heavenly Father, we just thank you for the privilege to come and serve this community. Father, we just pray right now that you will just grant us wisdom, clarity, and that you'll be at the center of all things, and we just give you the praise and glory in your name. Amen.
Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Moving on to the agenda modifications, please note that consent items on 11 and 12, which are the lighting and landscape maintenance district, will be voted on separately due to where some of the council reside. And staff has provided engineering reports for items on the consent calendar 11 and 12, LLMD 1 and LLMD 2 through 6. The website has been updated. Hard copies have been made available in the foyer. Okay? Anything else with the agenda at this time? Okay. Seeing none from the council, we will move on to public communication. You are welcome and encouraged to participate in this meeting. Public comment is taken on action items appearing on the consent calendar or business items on the agenda when they are called. Public comment on any other items within the scope of the city's jurisdiction, including items not on the agenda, will be considered at this time. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker. Members of the public submitting written requests at least 24 hours prior to the meeting will be allotted five minutes to comment per speaker, and repetitive comments may be limited, and large groups are encouraged to select representatives to express the opinions of the group. We do have one written request, and that is, again, Mr. PR Joel, you have five minutes, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, members of the council. Well, this is my 10th time standing in front of you, and that would be approximately four and a half months of my time and yours. I still am against naming that park to be Dedarus Baines, the reason we were told before. Today, I am to tell you the meeting, which none of you done anything accordingly. We had to set up a meeting with Mr. McIntyre, who wrote the report, and Mr. Chaffin. Now, I can probably only tell one report, the one meeting, at this time because five minutes are allowed. Now, the meeting that we had was Raji Timber, myself, Mr. McIntyre, and his assistant. Now, that was concerning the criteria that Mr. Mark Boomgarden as a mayor set up, and then it was all in favor. Now, my thing all along has been that Mr. Dedarus Baines have not met the criteria, period. Nobody listened. I hope if people are watching at home, they would understand that. Now, the meeting with Mr. McIntyre was after the hellos and everything. My first point of asking him was, who was this person? Staff has received a request to name the park after Mr. Dedarus Baines. Why was not a name put on there? I know why, and I'll tell you if you believe in it. Mr. Caron Baines is the one who brought the name. Who is Caron Baines? He is the son to Mr. Dedarus Baines. He does not belong to the council. He does not belong to the staff. He is a supervisor of Sutter County. He brought the name to you. Nobody paid any attention. So my next question to Mr. McIntyre was, the criteria, that does Mr. Baines meet the criteria? We went through point by point. Seven points does not meet it. The eighth point on there is that you have to have a background check. Fine. Where and how was the background check done? He said, well, City of Uba City Police Department did that. Fine. No problem. But he does not meet the seven points in there that has to be. Now, Mr. Chaffin said that it only has to be one, but, Mr. McIntyre, it has to be all. Who is right? Chaffin or McIntyre? I don't know. I'm just a citizen, standing here and complaining. Now, after all that, we spent an hour, and I told them about the fight that I had with Mr. Dedarus Baines's family. From the time of the start to the finish of the start of that fight, they went in to file a report with the police department of Marysville. And guess what? They would not give a name who fought them. I find out, and I go back over to the police department to say, I'm the one who they fought. They wouldn't blame me. They said, there are seven or eight people that got a bloody nose or a black eye or a bump on their head. How could you do it? Hey, I did it. I was young enough. So I directly filed a report also. They said, well, they didn't give any name who beat them up. What does that tell you? So therefore, it went on. On the last meeting, Mr. Bubir Sohle said that there might be a grudge that I'm against this. I do not hold grudges. As you and Mr. Sohle should know, the only person that holds a grudge is a loser. When we go out, play events, any athletic, the one who loses, he holds a grudge against the winner. I didn't lose, they did. Now, getting back to the criteria. Mr. McIntyre said, the department usually named this. Now, remember what I said. Usually names it the department. And I said, department did not name it. It was Mr. Caron Baines who named it. And he shook his head, yes. Now, with the criteria and everything, he's saying that you have to meet all of them, and Mr. Chaffin saying there's only one. Why? And therefore, you know, I don't think to go into another thing. If you can recall the first meeting that I was here four and a half months ago, and I told you the person that Mr. Dedarus Baines is, nobody believed it. Nobody said a thing. I told them that his mentor is Mr. Malik from BC, who is doing the same thing in BC. Now, just to let you know, Mr. Malik has been shot to death last Thursday, and the people are going saying, he got what he deserved. And that was the same scenario with Mr. Dedarus Baines, when the tree fell on him. So you go from there, we naming a park that has attachment or did have an attachment with Mr. Malik, we telling the country of the world, hey, here was a terrorist that blew up the plane with 300-plus passengers. Thank you.
Thank you. As usual, we'll just refer this back to staff where the conversations continue to happen, if anything arises. Mr. Chaffin, do you feel the need to make any comments at this time?
No, other than to note that at the meeting of September 21st, 2021, Mr. McIntyre made a presentation to the city council regarding the criteria. If you go back to the city's website and review his comments that were made, you will note that he specifically called out that the criteria were separate. And so I would just suggest, since Mr. McIntyre is not available this evening, that those who are curious can certainly go back to that video to refresh their memories of events. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Chaffin. We will move on. I have three speaker cards. The first one is Mr. Dale Whitmore. If you'll state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes, sir.
Hello. Thank you. My name is Dale Whitmore, 503 Tulsa Court in Uba City. Just came tonight to discuss the lock gate at the end of Shanghai Bend Road, which prevents vehicle access to the Shanghai Bend Rapids fishing access. A few months ago, the gate located at the end of Shanghai Bend and adjacent to the Feather River was locked by the Uba City Public Works Department. This gate has been open for public vehicle access to the Shanghai Bend Rapids for many decades. The distance from the lock gate to the rapids is nearly a half mile. There are many people who cannot walk that far for fishing access. Before the city makes a decision affecting recreational access to the Shanghai Bend Rapids, should consider the effect of the decision upon public access to and use of the river and attempt, so far as feasible, to avoid or minimize any harm to that interest. I think you've all got a copy of the letter that I produced, and I'm just asking that the gate be reopened with vehicle access restored to how it has been for the past several decades for the enjoyment of the public. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Whitmore, thank you. We've got two other people want to comment on the same thing, so we'll go ahead and take their comments first before any referral or anything. Mr. Frank Shatner? You state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
My name is Frank Shatner. I'm from, live on 1154 Santa Barbara Way. I came this evening to support Dale Whitmore and his position to open up that gate. Since COVID, I just want to add some additional comments. Since COVID, the interest in outdoor activities and recreation has increased dramatically. I think many people are aware of that, to the point that many fishing and tackle companies can hardly keep up with the interest, in particular, this fishing side of things. So I think this is just another point that supports the idea that we should open access and keep access open to Shanghai Bend, which happens to be one of the most popular fishing spots on the entire Feather River. Thank you for allowing me to make my comments.
All right. Thank you, sir. And then the last one is Mr. Frank Coats. You'll state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Francis Coats, 3392 Camanito Avenue. Basically, what Dale and Frank said, maybe adding that it actually is a legal requirement that prior to interfering with public access to navigable water, you're supposed to consider the effect of that decision on public access and use of that navigable water, and you're supposed to refrain from interfering with access when feasible, to the extent feasible. And you're supposed to do this in a public, transparent way so that the public can participate in the decision. It shouldn't be made by an administrative official, one of your employees, without the public having a chance to participate. Thank you.
All righty. Thank you. Ms. Langley, because we're just finding out about this ourselves tonight, or I know I am, is this something that you and your team can follow up with these gentlemen? I'm sure there's other anglers out there that probably have similar questions, or how would you like to handle it, Ms. Langley?
It looks like Ben is queued up to say something, but yes, Ben will follow up with these gentlemen.
This is, it's an issue that's been around probably ever since the spoof of work and the levy got going, it really kind of raised its head. And so there's access for walking, there's access for biking, and it's not a city gate. And so there's a lot of, there's a lot of stuff going on right there between a fishing game easement, state property, and LD1 responsibilities. And the status is, is that it's not a city lock. And if a lock is placed on there, I'll have that removed, too. But there is, there's definitely, there's strong opinions on either side because of the vandalism, because of the dumping, because of the fires that happened at that dead-end spot versus the access for ultimate access in the state in the right. And so it's not a city gate, and if there's a city lock on there, I'll have it removed tomorrow, and I'm happy to follow up with Mr. Whitmore and look at potential options. We're always open for the city to help be, you know, come to, you know, collaborate to come to an answer possibly on how to help make that area safer, but also keep access. So I'll reach out to him and make sure we follow up.
I appreciate that. Does that help you, gentlemen, this evening? Okay. Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
I have a quick question, Ben. Not a city gate, not a city lock, who locked it?
You know, so I don't know. But I would say, at the same time, it might be a public employee. We go down there and pick up, we go down and pick up mattresses all the time. We coordinate with Saylove, and there's a lot of confusion on who owns what back in there along that responsibility area. And so, but I wouldn't be surprised between seeing LD1 locks, different sort of state locks, and then, hey, guess what? They usually only last a month before they get cut. And so, but I will, I'll check that out.
All right. Thank you for that, and just for what it is worth, for the record, I do support their efforts to keep public access to fishing, public access to fishing. I don't think that because a bunch of clowns want to dump mattresses and start fires that these folks have to suffer, in my opinion. So hopefully, we can have a deeper conversation and find other, excuse me, other solutions, but not a city gate or lock, but that's how I feel about the issue. And thank you for the letter, Mr. Whitmore.
Any other comments for, questions for Mr. Moody from the council? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Moody. Thank you, gentlemen, for bringing that to our attention, and I trust that it's in good hands now. Any other comments from anyone here tonight that for items that are not on the agenda? Any other comments from anyone tonight that's not on the agenda? Okay. Hearing none, we will go ahead and move on to the consent calendar. All items listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the council votes on the motion unless members of this council request specific items to be discussed or removed from the consent calendar for individual actions. And please note that items 11 and 12 have to be voted on separately tonight. So with that, do we have any, first of all, any questions from the council on agenda or consent items 2 through 10? Okay? Is there any public comment on consent calendar items 2 through 10? Any public comment? Okay. Coming back to the council for action on consent calendar items 2 through 10.
To the mayor, I move that we approve consent calendar items 2 through 10.
I have a motion from Councilmember Espandola and a second from Councilmember Harris. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, so 2 through 10 carries. We'll go to agenda item 11, which is the Uba City Landscape Maintenance District number one, which is Stabler Lane Garden Highway Area Resolution of Intent.
Through the mayor, I live in this district and must recuse myself from the decision.
All righty, sir. Okay. All right. Is there any questions concerning agenda item 11 from the council? Any public comment on agenda item 11? Any public comment? Hearing none, back to the council for action.
To the mayor, I move that we approve item 11.
I have a motion, and I have a second. A motion from Councilmember Espandola, a second from Councilmember Harris. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. Motion carries. We will move on if we can get Councilmember Boomgarden. We will move to agenda item 12, Uba City Lighting and Landscape Maintenance Districts number 2, 3, 4, and 5, Town Center, 69 subdivisions throughout Uba City, and Uba City Lighting and Landscape Maintenance District number 6, which is a commercial district resolution of intent.
To the mayor, I need to recuse on this one, as I live in that area.
As well as I do. I live in one of those areas, so, Mr. Vice Mayor, you have the mic.
Okay. Thank you. So agenda item number 12, I'll open it for any public comment or questions at this point. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council for action.
Through the mayor.
Through the vice mayor.
Thank you.
Acting as mayor. Move to approve item number 12.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a motion from Councilmember Boomgarden and a second from Councilmember Espandola. All those in favor, say aye. 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 All those opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. Motion carries. We will now move to business item, agenda item 13, which is community sponsorship request, and that will be presented by our city manager, Ms. Dagana Langley. You have the floor.
I need to, to the mayor, I did not clearly state, can we separate 13A, 13B, because I need to recuse myself from 13A?
All right. We can take them as separate items, and so we will take 13A, and if you will state for the record why you're recusing.
Yes, I will recuse myself from 13A. Thank you.
Through the mayor, I'd like to know why.
That's the question. You have to state why you're recusing.
I work closely with AHA on many activities, and I recused myself at the previous meeting as well.
Okay. All right.
To be consistent and with integrity, thanks.
Ms. Langley.
All right. Good evening, mayor and council. It feels like it's been a while since I've been right here, so it's good to see you tonight. So before you is the community sponsorship request. So for a little bit of background, in January of this year, council amended the policy, but the general intent is that the public will receive some intrinsic cultural, economical, educational, or entertainment value from the event. The review, the policy states that staff will bring forward applications on a quarterly basis, so generally in January, April, July, and October. And the eligibility criteria includes events or programs providing a benefit to Uba City residents, fundraising events for nonprofit organizations that primarily serve Uba City residents, events or programs that contribute positively to the recognition and image of Uba City, events or programs that are open to the general public, and organizations that demonstrate that they can meet the necessary requirements of the agreement. So the first request is from the Alliance for Hispanic Advancement, and I know we have some representatives here tonight, and Margaret Fernandez, who submitted the application. And so, under their request, they're proposing to provide resources for Hispanic businesses such as training to enhance their businesses in fiscal management, staff development, technical support, and leadership training, host hiring events that provide bilingual staff to assist in interviewing skills, and host career events to introduce various career opportunities, the training necessary for those careers, and provide financial assistance. So at this point, I'm going to skip the slide related to Uba Sutter Arts and get to the fiscal impact. So in this fiscal year 2223 budget, council approved $15,000 for community contributions, which the AHA request would fall under community contributions. What council has generally discussed is having the money available on a quarterly basis so that as you review applications on a quarterly basis, you have funds available to allocate. So for this quarter, there would be $3,750, as we have not received any other applications for this quarter. And the recommendation would be to adopt a resolution to approve a monetary sponsorship request from the Alliance for Hispanic Advancement of up to $6,000 to advance Hispanic heritage in our local communities through community action, educational enhancement, and economic development. The reason that we put $6,000 is that that's the amount that they submitted for their application. I know that the mayor has had a meeting with Margaret and other representatives from AHA. This doesn't prevent them from coming forward with another application next quarter, but in regards to tonight, it would be evaluating based upon the money available for this quarter. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, and I'm sure that Margaret would be happy to come up and answer any questions as well.
Any questions from the council?
Before we discuss funding, is the item B, is that the coming out of the same community contributions, or is it coming out of community events?
I would recommend that that come out of community events.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? All right. Ms. Fernandez, would you like to make some comments as you're the requestee?
Thank you. Actually, I do want to thank the city council for, back in April, we were awarded $1,100, which we will use thoroughly. And I also appreciate being invited to reapply, not only this quarter, but the following quarter. We have been working with our newly found Business and Economic Development Committee, and we have some fabulous ideas. And the 3750, we have allotted for purchasing Microsoft Office license as well as Quickbook license, because those seem to be the two main things that a lot of the Hispanic business owners don't have and also need training on. Also, we want to spend that money on very, very part-time staffing that would help with the communications, managing files, and orientating new members. And then, thirdly, we want to have a specific job fair, interview fair, bilingual, and also a career fair that will show what other opportunities are out there and where they can find them that will help them in their language. But I just wanted to make a point that what the alliance goal is, we believe that the Hispanic community has been an underserved community, though it's a big chunk of this area, and we just want to be the representative to guide them and to offer them the services through our really wonderful partnerships that we've created. We know we partner with the Uba Sutter Chamber of Commerce, the Uba Sutter EDC, the Uba Sutter Arts Council, as well as the California Hispanic Chamber. And with those four, right now, those four very strong partnerships, we can really kick off. And we're still also going out there and creating new partnerships. But I just wanted to say, again, thank you for the opportunity, and call me anytime you have any more questions or any follow-up.
All righty. Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Any other comments from the public? Okay, bringing it back to the council, first, I would like to say thank you for taking the time the other morning to meet with myself, and I think that, I think that helped us a long way, just understanding the process and everything, so, but thank you, guys. I think it was a valuable hour that we spent. So bring it back to the council for any other comments or action.
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to amend the item A, adopting a resolution to approve a monetary sponsorship request from the Alliance for Hispanic Advancement of a full quarterly allotment of $3,750 to advance Hispanic heritage in our local communities through community action, educational enhancement, and economic development.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Second. Okay. I have a motion by Councilmember Boomgarden. I have a second by the vice mayor, Wade Kirchner. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Motion carries. If we could get Councilmember Espandola to come back out, we will go to 13B.
Through the mayor.
Yes.
Speaking, we're on the subject of recusals. On item A, for AHA, Councilwoman Espandola recused the explanation she gave, she works closely with them. That brings a concern for me for item B, for Uba Sutter Arts and Culture, because I'm on the board of directors. So by working closely, I'm not sure what that means. If it means you receive money from them, it makes sense, and I can stay here, but I'm kind of confused as to whether maybe I should recuse, or if I, I don't know. That's my.
We will ask Mr. Chaffin to answer that instead of giving an armchair quarterbacking response. Mr. Chaffin.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Harris, do you receive any financial remuneration for sitting as a board member?
I do not. No, I do not.
Did you submit the application this evening?
No.
Were you co-signing to the application?
No.
Under those conditions, you are probably okay, though, again, I'm always reluctant to do triage conflicts issues, but you're probably okay, but if you feel uncomfortable, you certainly can recuse yourself.
I'm not uncomfortable at all. I just want to make sure that we're doing things correctly. That's all. I wasn't sure what work closely meant, you know?
Let me add to that. I did check with our city attorney prior to, months ago, assisting with the application. I was part of that discussion, so I felt it was important for me to have not be considered anything, you know, conflict of interest or anything. So that's why I recuse myself.
And that further information makes it all clear. So thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. We're ready to proceed. Ms. Langley.
All right. So the next application is from Uba Sutter Arts and Culture, and David Reed is here tonight. Thank you for being here. They have a mural marathon project proposed, which would be five artists would have 48 hours to complete 20 to complete 20 by 24-foot murals on the Church Street side of the Sutter Theater Center for the Arts. They would host an art festival on the street in a adjacent parking lot with a total cost of $30,000. They were requesting matching funds against the grants previously required. Their total request was $10,000. In addition, utility box murals, they're proposing five hand-painted mini-murals on Uba City traffic signal utility boxes that cost $1,000 each. Here is the wall along the theater that the five murals would be proposed. And then, on the right-hand side, are previous utility boxes that have been painted with the assistance of the Uba Sutter Arts and Culture. In terms of the fiscal year budget, council approved $10,000 for the entire year. So in terms of this quarter, it would be $2,500. And the recommendation would be to adopt a resolution to approve a monetary sponsorship request from Uba Sutter Arts and Culture of up to $10,000 for the support of a mural marathon and utility box mini-mural event in Uba City. And with that, I can answer any questions? Or I'm sure David Reed would be happy to answer questions as well.
First, is there any questions from the council? Ignorant Mr. Reed, would you like to say a few words as the requestee?
Sure. Good evening. David Reed, Executive Director of Uba Sutter Arts and Culture. Now in our 41st year as the local representatives to the California Arts Council. We understand budgetary restraints. We live and breathe that ourselves, of course. Anything that you're able to contribute would be much appreciated. We thought about getting the utility box murals back on track. We've lost a couple, as you know, to accidents. Most recently, the very popular Rooster over at Winco. And prior to that, a year, a year and a half ago, the Canadian Geese mural near Uba City High School, the Honkers Utility Box. So maybe at a minimum, we can consider restoring those once, and I'm not sure about Winco, if the box is back in place yet or not. So one way or another, we're going to do a mural marathon, if not this year, next year. Of course, that mural is gone now. We had received a grant for that some years ago. We had to resurface that entire side of the theater about a year ago, prior to our reopening. So anything you can do is always appreciated. We'll put it to good use. And we really love the fact that now we have a home base in Uba City with our beautiful Sutter Theater Center for the Arts. So thank you for your support.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Any other comments from the public? Any other comments from the public? I'll bring it back to the council. And Mr. Reed, I'll just start it as I did the others. Thank you for all the work the Arts Council's done down there. It's nice having another theater and different entertainment coming to our downtown area. So I just want to say thank you. Any other comments from the council? Then we'll entertain a motion, action.
Through the mayor, I move to approve the, to adopt the resolution, or actually, to modify the resolution, approval of monetary sponsorship request for the Uba Arts and Culture up to $2,500 for the support of the mural marathon utility box mini-mural event in Uba City.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Espendola.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Boomgarden. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Langley, and congratulations to both your groups. We will move on to Agenda Item 14, wastewater treatment facility effluent discharge outfall diffuser project. Try to say that three times. The final design amendment. And you are not Mr. Moody.
Apologize. He's gone to the bullpen.
Gotcha. Kevin, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor and members of our city council. Item 14 before you tonight is requesting amendment to our contract with Jacobs Engineering to complete the final design of our wastewater treatment facility outfall diffuser project. Yes, it's a mouthful. And it's always nice to go after Diana here. So I apologize in advance for my presentation not being quite as polished as hers. Okay, so just a quick overview of the project. I know council has been extensively involved with this project, including advocating for funds at both the state and federal level. So I know you all are very familiar with this figure. And feel free to have me fast forward if I need to. Historically, our wastewater treatment facility located in red... Can I point with this? There's our wastewater treatment facility in red at the top of the figure. It's had two options to dispose of treated effluent. The primary option has been to discharge directly into the Feather River. Right here near Shanghai Bend, there's the existing diffuser. That's been the primary option to dispose of treated effluent via diffuser pipe. And this is no longer an option for us at this time since the state is allowing a... Since the state will not allow us to utilize this location since the erosion of the falls has left our outfall diffuser pipe exposed on dry land. The secondary option for disposing has been to these effluent disposal ponds over on the east side of the river. Those ponds are problematic in that they're limited in capacity. They require routine monitoring and maintenance. And they're vulnerable to damage during flood events, which can leave them unusable for extended periods of time. So the city has been actively studying potential replacement options for the existing diffuser. And the preferred project is to install a new pipeline, which would be roughly in Garden Highway from Shanghai Bend area down to about half a mile south of Berry Road. That's a length of about 10,000 feet. That's the most stable area of the river in our area. That's the preferred location. And so about two miles of pipeline. And the pipeline would need to be about 42 inches in diameter. So we did not arrive at that decision overnight. As you can see, the city has been studying replacement options for the existing diffuser since 2011, when the Shanghai Falls eroded. And in 2018, council made a substantial commitment to the project by awarding a contract to CH Twoam Hill Engineers, which is now Jacobs, to provide the services shown. Jacobs has completed the preliminary design. And they're well underway to completing the environmental permitting. The Rightaway acquisition is also in progress. And they've completed about 90% of the final design. Okay, this slide shows the original contract amount and then various amendments that council has approved to date. With the original contract amount, I want to point out that Jacobs' original proposal was for about $3.8 million. However, the city decided to postpone approximately $1 million worth of the original scope of work that we are now requesting to move forward with tonight. Amendment number one was to perform some additional surveys in the river bottom, the channel itself, and to also perform some sediment bed transport studies to help assist with determining that most stable location of the river, which resulted in the alignment that was shown previously. Amendments two and three, those allocated approximately $340,000 of final design budget to basically, what happened is we got the 30% design cost estimate. And it was about a, up to a $35 million project. So we wanted to hit pause on the design and basically look at alternatives to the treatment process at the treatment facility to see if there was a better use of public funds than running this pipeline. And then amendment number four was presenting to council the results of that treatment study and basically determining that council agreed with staff's recommendation to move forward with the pipeline project. And amendment four basically reinstated that $340,000 of budget transfers that we'd made. And then also authorized about $560,000 to kick off the final design effort. Basically, that $1 million that I mentioned earlier that we had not programmed, that was part of the $560,000. And then, as you can see, we are requesting about $830,000 tonight for amendment number five, which would bring the total contract amount to about $4.7 million. Okay, so what do you get for an extra $830,000? And why are we asking for that amount tonight? During the design process, the city requested several design changes that caused our consultant to have to redesign portions of the project. These included relocating the surge tank at the wastewater treatment plant to an area of the plant that became available to us that made more sense. We also performed some additional potholing in Garden Highway, which we expect to recoup some of that cost during construction. We changed, we have to change the bifurcation station, which is at Shanghai Bend, where the pipeline will start. It was originally scoped as an above-ground, just chain-link fence or decorative fence facility. We're going to have to put that below ground now. And it's going to have to be structurally engineered for that. We're also relocating a significant portion of the pipeline out of Garden Highway and into paralleling the levee behind some of the orchards at the request of a landowner. Once we got into the Rightaway negotiations, we had to change that alignment. We also evaluated several pump station modifications to try to figure out the best configuration. And then additional services identified. We'd like to have our consultant help us with the SRF loan application. We feel like that would position us very strongly for that grant. We also have some pump station physical modeling that we need to do. Instead of spending a bunch of money on building a new wet well and so forth, we're going to do some modeling to verify that we'll meet all the hydraulic standards. And then the agencies are requesting that we do some extensive bank stabilization efforts. Instead of just dropping riprap in, we're going to have to do some bioengineering on that. Okay, this isn't directly related to the approval tonight, but I just wanted to give council a quick update on project schedule and the costs. This slide shows that if all the funding were secured and all the permits are not delayed, we would anticipate completing the final design next April. We would then probably hopefully receive the permits in June, advertise for bids in July and August, award the contract in September. And we'd expect the construction contract to last from October 2023 to December 2024. And then we've got some testing and startup. That schedule represents a best-case scenario. The construction cost estimate as of last month is about $25 million. That's up about $6 million from when we last reported in July of 2020. The level of accuracy of this estimate is expected to range from about $23 to $29 million. The soft costs are now about $6.3 million, which is up about $1 million from last July, or July 2020. When you add that $6 million into $29, we're still looking at about a $35 million project. We've also submitted a SRF pre-application last month. We've been assigned a manager for our application and had a very productive meeting, actually, this afternoon. I think all of that puts us on track to submit our final application by December. And that would keep us in line for potential funding during the 2023-2024 funding cycle. So to recap, staff is requesting about $830,000 for amendment five to complete the final design. We have budgeted for this request through the CIP budget process. And we have about $2.5 million available in the CIP account. Council's alternatives, we could postpone the final design of the new outfall. Have to keep in mind that in doing so, it would present some operational risks associated with using the effluent ponds. And also, the state is monitoring our progress on this new outfall as it relates to our discharge permit. So staff is recommending council adopt a resolution to award amendment number five to the professional service agreement with CH Twoam Hill Engineers, Inc., to complete final design activities for the wastewater treatment facility effluent discharge outfall diffuser project, including new scope of work tasks identified from the design permitting and easement acquisition activities, and authorize the city manager to execute the amendment following approval as to form by the city attorney with a finding that is in the best interest of the city. So with that, I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
All right, thank you. Any questions from the council? Okay, hearing no questions at this time. Is there any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Okay, coming back to the council for action or question.
The mayor? City Attorney, do I have to read all that through that again? Or can I do it by just motion?
Just one motion, just to doctor's staff's recommendation.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and make a motion to accept Agenda Item 14 as stated.
Okay, I have a motion.
Through the mayor, may I have further discussion on this prior to the motion?
We can.
Thank you. I just want to congratulate the team for putting this together. What a, an aggressive work of timeline in such a short period of time, because this is no easy task. As you can tell, based on the schedule that you've put together, and the two points that, Kevin, that you covered were extremely important. The discharge permit, which is a serious part of this work that we need to get done for the outfall diffuser. And I'm glad to hear that you've met this afternoon in moving forward with the SRF funding possibility, right? In talking with the state or federal reps, I'm always asking for the funding to be considered a grant fund, not a revolving loan, even though the loans are really low interest for our city. But I would certainly hope that we can find a way to get a grant. But I think, have to commend the team for putting this project in an amount of probably, what, three weeks? Three months, quickly regrouped and finish, and just finished another grant and submitted already? That's a lot of work, a lot of work. So thank you so much for doing that. And I appreciate, I certainly appreciate all this that you're doing and certainly trying to help out with funding for all of us here in the city. Thank you.
Okay, I have a motion on the table to have a second.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Vice Mayor Kirchner, a second, Councilmember Espendola. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Thank you, sir. We're going to go on to Agenda Item 15, which is the 2022 Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan and 2021 Action Plan Amendment. And now it's Mr. Moody. So you have the floor, sir.
All right. So my favorite subject, one of my favorite subjects here. So the Community Development Block Grant, it's a, it's a funding source with the city being an entitlement agency that we regularly deal with. being an entitlement agency that we regularly deal with. And so this is one of the substantial things that we do each year is work through our allocation and how to distribute it. So, so good evening, good evening, and I'll work through this here. So it's a little background for, for a quick refresher is the city is an entitlement jurisdiction. We receive annual federal formula grant funds from the US Department of Housing and Urban Development. The purpose of the CDBG is to provide decent housing, a suitable living environment, and expand economic opportunities primarily for low and moderate income persons. So that's the key, key word, and one of the key definitions. And so it's to benefit low and moderate income as defined, and then aid in preventing, in prevention and elimination of slums or blight, and meet a need having a particular urgency to alleviate emergency conditions. And so this definition changes slightly based on inflation and the status of our area. And so low income is 50% or less of the area median income, and moderate income is less than, equal to or less than 80% of the area median income. And that area median income, it's always a little bit subject, it's, it's on a table, and then you got, you have the Fed, how the feds define it, and then how the state define it. But where we're at this year is that it's, it's $75,000. So really, we're trying to help folks that, in neighborhoods that make $60,000 or less a year for a family of four. So that's a family of four making $60,000 or less. This year, the city received $628,525 through the CDBG program year. It fluctuates. The last few years, I've seen it up to 675, 650, down to 615, but we've, the last few years, it's been floating around that range. There's some stipulations as far as how it gets divvied up. There's a maximum of 20% of allocation for administration. We're proposing 15%. A maximum of 15% can be used for public services. That's, it's defined as where there's no, not a tangible product at the end, this public service. Typically, historically, we've used it for homelessness activities required, and then there's a required to direct a minimum of 70% to the funding low, moderate income person households. Funding is to be spent within the program year. And so that's, that's one of the stipulations that is always, creates a lot of work for staff, is that it's, it's tight money. The money needs to be spent this year by June 30th of the following year, or you start jeopardizing future allocations. So here's a quick flow chart, how it runs through. Basically, what we're looking for after the public hearing tonight, we would, with approval, it would go to HUD, 4040, for a 45-day approval window. After we, after the local HUD rep, so let me get this right, submit application to HUD with a 45-day approval window, window, then they'll send it to, as of August 16th, they need to send it into, August 16th, action plan should be completed by city and sent to HUD. So we have, August 1st is our goal to get it into HUD, so we stay on target for our timeline this year. And then with that, once we get approval, we'll work with the sub recipients and then work out contracts so that they then have until next June 30th to spend the money. So, so Cliff Notes as we work through this is that we had 20 applicants with over $1.6 million in requests for that $635,000. And then when you, when you whittle it back, there was a pot of money that was needed to divvy up. And so there was a, there was a ad hoc committee where there were some meetings with some discussions about, about that with some staff review as far as eligibility and some priorities based on, on need. And so what, where that landed is 13 projects that I'll work through real quickly here, and then I could definitely dive into any specifics based on council questions. So program administration, that's 15%. And so we put that in the budget. Many years, we don't reach that actual use, and what we usually do is then carry it over the next year into a project where we can then throw it back into the pot. But we take 15% for the budget for administrative support. So UBA Homeless Consortium, and we're, we're, we're basically with all of these, this is what staff recommendation is, but with that, there is opportunities for changes. But there's been a lot of thought and priorities on what those applications were for, minimum amounts and maximum amounts and what their programs offered. So with that, $50,000 for Sutter UBA Homeless Consortium, Plazium for 7,700, Habitat for Humanity, $10,000, Freed, $20,000, UBA Sutter Gleaners Food Bank, $100,000, UBA City Community Services Senior Center for ADA Bathroom Improvements, $80,000, UBA City Community Services, San Brandon Park Safety Improvements, $55,000, UBA City Fire Department Station 1, Emergency Messaging Marquee and ADA Access Bathrooms, $74,725, a UBA City Cleanup Reserve. And so this is the abatement of illegal refuse vandalism and damage in blighted areas for And here, a couple new programs here. UBA City Public Works Sewer Lateral Repair, a $35,000 program for, in the low-income designated areas to provide a fund to help repair sewer laterals, and then also a sidewalk repair assistance program. So if there's damaged sidewalk in those areas, that owner's responsibility, if they're in those areas, they could then qualify for the program. And then $167,000 and change for a capital improvement project that, for ADA improvement sidewalks at various locations around town. And so in addition to the CDBG allocation, we're requesting $145,000 from the 2019-2020 owner occupied housing rehabilitation that was unexpended. And so this is some money that's old money that we need to get off the books, is that we're requesting that money be put, we authorize it to be transferred, and that's part of the allocation that we're asking for tonight. And so, and the reason that money's there, with it, it really comes down to the economy. There's been several loan payoffs on existing homes that we've had because of the low interest rates. And then there, just program management transition with RHA and how to get, get that money used. And so it's been difficulty with the housing, the cost of housing and the program requirements to utilize that money. So that's why we're requesting to, let's take this money before we run into problems with it getting too old, put it in, and allocate it this year. And so with that, I recommend Items A and B as presented, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Right. Does the council have any specific questions for Mr. Moody before we go to the public hearing? Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ben, just, just out of curiosity, we received two requests from some very worthwhile agencies today, Hispanic Advancement and UBA Sutter Arts and Culture. Both of, both organizations do serve underserved communities and low-income communities. And reading some of the criteria here that we're getting you some CDBG money, I'm wondering if it might be able to be articulated, if it's legal anyway, to maybe tap into this, even if it's just $2,500 each, to help those agencies help out some of the low, low-mud folks.
Definitely, definitely so. And so there has been some preliminary discussions and talk about application periods and the new period coming through, and then just really defining that scope, so then that way it fits. So, so there's, and staff's willing to work with them to do that. I think there, there's probably an opportunity for that to happen. We just need to really define what their product is and then how it accounts to the low, medium income folks.
Okay, good. I'm glad that we can have an opportunity for some discussion there, because we can definitely, if we, if we're able to help them out, I'm guarantee they'd be willing to target.
Yeah.
The efforts for that. So thank you.
Through the mayor.
If I can just follow up real quick for a little clarification, because as city manager said, I met with AHA the other morning for about an hour, and that was part of it. And I know that they are planning on attending next year's workshop in January, February, because they didn't quite understand what we were trying to explain to them at the last, the last meeting when they got the $1,100. But I think we're going to probably have multiples come from them next year.
It sounds like you're already ahead of me then, so thank you very much.
No problem, sorry about that.
At least we're on the same page.
Yeah, we're all on the same page, all three of us. The timeline, they must.
Not allowed to talk, so you know.
Yeah, why, let's, let's chat, right? Let's chat. The timeline was missed for this year, the opportunity, but I think it was very nice of you, Mayor, to meet with the AHA leadership. I think that's very much appreciated in helping clarify some of the processes, as you have stated. But I love the idea that you mentioned, and that's exactly, I think, the kind of work we need to do in the future. It's just, I think they missed the opportunity on, and I know our city team really does a really hard job to try to notify people to apply within the time scope, but we can always do better, so.
Yep. All right. If there's no other questions, then we will go forward and open the public hearing. So the public hearing to receive comments on the CDBG 2022 Annual Action Plan and the 2021 Action Plan substantial amendment is now open. If there are any members of the public who would like to address the council on this issue, please provide your statement via public comment and state your name and address for the record. Do we have any comments from the public during this public hearing? Do we have any comments from the public during this public hearing? Okay, hearing none, no comments on this issue. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and bring this back to the council for action. That wasn't the action I was after. But I like it.
Wonder what you won. Did you win something?
Yeah, I like that. Through the mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I, I lost my train of thought. I move to adopt AMB, if that's appropriate, city attorney? Or do I have to read it out?
No, just Item B. We've already done.
Oh, I'm sorry, thanks. My colleague over here says grace, Item B, Item B. Thank you.
All right, do I have a second?
Sir.
Okay, I have a motion by councilmember Esmondola, a second by Vice Mayor Kirchner. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed say nay. Ayes have it, motion carries. Mr. Moody, I think you have what you need to carry it forward for now, correct?
You, thank you. I just would like to recognize Ms. Shannon Jones in the back. She, she's really one of our new, she is our new housing analyst and really was instrumental in putting this together and moving it forward and working with everybody, so.
Thank you, Shannon. Thank you. All right, then we will bring this back to the council. I just had it where we're at. Item 16, future agenda items. Is there anything that has come up in tonight's meeting that the council wants to identify as a future agenda item? Hearing none, we're going to move on to reports and communications, and we will start with the city manager's report. Ms. Langley.
All right, thank you. So last week, 109 water violation notices were sent out to customers, and so those were the first warnings in terms of please adjust your sprinkler timers. The next one will have the $50 surcharge added to the bill, and we're expecting to be issuing those violation notices on a weekly basis. So to our water customers out there, please check your irrigation timers to make sure that you are only watering on Mondays and Thursdays. Also, it was exciting to see the Burlington Grand opening this, last week at the mall. Also related to water, the finance department is easing back into shut-offs for non-payment of bills, and so they are reaching out to customers that have high balances to start the shut-off program, and then will expand it to all of the customers that have not been paying their bills. And then the Lincoln East Pacific Plan annexation has been recorded, so it's official. So this is the area between Lincoln and Boge, George Washington and Sanborn. So we're excited to have that area into the city. And then just want to acknowledge Mr. John Boyer and Carol Boyer. So this couple, John, who is on the senior commission and does a fantastic job of bingo on Friday nights at the senior center, and then Carol Boyer, who volunteers for the police department, and she is the biggest ambassador for the police department. She is out there talking about the citizens academy, and I mean, what a, what a couple in terms of serving the community. So I just want to say thank you. And if you've never done bingo on a Friday night, it is the most exciting thing and so much fun.
And she didn't win.
I did not win, and I still had a great time.
What time? What time?
Well, it starts at 6:00 PM, but the doors close at 5:50. But if you want a seat, you need to be there about 4:45.
Really?
Yes. And I understand that people start lining up about 3:30, even though the doors don't open until 4:30, because it is that competitive.
And there's an age limit on this, correct?
No.
No.
Oh.
18.
18 and up. You do have to pay for a bingo. You do win money, yes, and they, they're, they're very kind. If you've never played before, they have daubers that you can borrow. There's a lot of different games. Takes about two and a half hours in terms of playing, but it is the most fantastic entertainment that's fairly cheap. Oh, there's about between 70 and 80 individuals every.
Usually have, average of 75 people.
And then also just a reminder for council, Waffle Wednesdays, the last Wednesday of the month, they always need assistance with serving. And so, John, I put that out there for, for good assistance.
What time is that?
What time is Waffle Wednesday?
Nine o'clock till 10:30.
Last Wednesday.
Last Wednesday.
That's next Wednesday.
Yep.
Next Wednesday.
Yep, but thank you to all of our senior commissioners.
Thank you.
Just thank you guys.
That's it.
That's it. And thank you, Ms. Langley. All right, we'll come back to the council, councilmember Esmondola.
I have to follow that, Diana, thank you. Thank you. I know, thanks, Tony. You're welcome, right? John, thanks for all the wonderful volunteering. Now it's going to sound kind of, bleh, you know, just what I'm going to report. Anyhow, participated in the Regional Water Authority Board Meeting, and mainly was centered around the evaluation of the executive director, so working on that. Then I joined last week through ACWA, the Association of California Water Agencies, and RWA, I was part of a delegation that attended in DC for three days, part of the business of that. And the priority was water and the impacts of the drought in the Sacramento Valley. I was able to present the two projects of the outfall diffuser and the replacement for the wastewater treatment that was discussed a little bit this evening, and I share, most of all of us on the council are pretty well informed on this. And secondly, on the electrical instruments improvements for the water treatment facility, asking for $3 million for the outfall diffuser and $5.3 million. Our team put together these great flyers that are easy to understand from any community member. If you'd like to have a copy, you're more than welcome to utilize these copies. And the discussion was about the community, the challenges to disadvantaged communities like ours and the agriculture industry as it all relates to this drought and the challenges that we are facing in California. And discussions of the delegate, delegation of the team, it was interesting to learn how much more hypersensitive of the discussion is because of the Colorado River on the southern part of California, and the lack of water for that area is going to be impacting our northern region. And those decisions are being made at the federal level, at the state level. And for us as a council, it's really important for us to engage within our state and federal representatives, because there are, there's a lot of grants, there's a lot of funding, and these decisions are often made in very limited views and impact of discussion by people that are not like ourselves as city council members. So I was with our delegation team, we met with high-level representatives. We were at Congressman Lamoffa's office, who will be our congressman here in January. We also met with the US Bureau of Reclamation, US EPA, met with US Senator Padilla directly, and met with senior counsel for the, for US Senator Feinstein, and multiple other representatives in all of those groups. And the two, the main things we're asking about, funding availability for our city for $30 million, and the $5.3 million for this electrical improvements that we need for cybersecurity for our water treatment, and also talking about our agriculture industry and, and the water rights and the allotments, and all those discussions that tie into also sites, project, and the need for sites project to be built. But in that, right now, it's going through permitting process through the state water board, and hoping to ask why that process takes 18 months instead of, it could be shortened to help expedite the ability for sites to, to, you know, break ground sooner than 18 months later. Funding seems to be already focused and placed for sites project. The JPA Executive Board and the executive director, Jerry Brown, has done an excellent job in securing and working on that piece. But anyone, any community member, us as a council supporting that only improves the chances of this to be moved forward, because there are challenges in these water permits issues where environmental community has a different stance on some of these things, believing that water allotments or water banks might be a little bit more important in certain areas of environmental issues, for example, fishing or wildlife habitat. But there has been some major improvements in agriculture to help with how we utilize and recycle and multi-benefit use of water. But there has been some major improvements in agriculture to help with how we utilize and recycle and multi-benefit use of water. But sharing these stories directly at the federal level is a way for us to be heard and to be listened and to hopefully find some opportunity for us to give funding for these projects. And also to be, to consider a larger watershed and banking of water in the Sacramento Valley, specifically to building additional ASRs in the area. And because our aquifer in the Sacramento Valley area seems to have, you know, we're robust in that in the Sacramento Valley and hoping to, hoping that we can get more of these groundwater built. But the rules below, under the ground are quite of an interesting navigation to try to figure all this out. So those were discussions. I don't want to get too, you know, into the weeds. I'm still learning myself. I always go ask Diana, Ben, and everyone else to make sure I'm on track so I'm not misguiding what is necessary for our two projects. Lastly, I want to say that thank you to U. B. Center Chamber Commerce. I attended, along with our mayor, the ribbon cutting of Harmony Village. I was also invited to the seventeenth annual multicultural women's dance that was held at A. K. And it was, it was great. I was featured, I was able to speak along with other women leaders in our community. And St. Isidore Church does their annual Virgen de Guadalupe. It's a club. They held a quermes, and a quermes is like a small carnival, and they had food and music. So I was able to join them, both of them on Sunday with a hundred and what degrees, right? And I know the Peach Festival sounded like a great success in Marizil, and I missed that. But wish them the best in that event. But that's all I have to report. Thank you.
Right, thank you. Councilmember Harris.
Give it a shot here.
Do you need a moment?
What?
Do you need a moment?
No, it's not going to help. So basically, you know, I've been sick. So I, but what I did manage to do in the last, since the last meeting I was able to, was I was able to join a trip that Secog sponsored to Salt Lake City. And the intent was to look at a hands-on approach to different types of communities that they're building out there and that some of their many multitudes of success stories. We met with many of the elected officials out there. We hit the ground running. It was a one-night trip. So from the moment we got to the airport, we got on a train and we were on our first stop. And so they, they were waiting for us, and they showed us a lot of different examples, primarily linking transit to housing and multi-use situations. So we, we call, they call it transit-oriented development, which is more than simply building a house close to a bus stop or a train station. The goal is to be able to get folks who live, you can live there, but reasonably not be expected to need a vehicle. So if you don't need a vehicle, you're, you're, in theory, you're saving time, but you're also, we're helping reduce congestion out there and G. H. G. emissions and all kinds of things, and ideally even improving quality of life. So they gave us, they took us to several examples of that. There's also a theory that they, that they have put forward out there called a fifteen-minute city, meaning that they, they plan the development in such a way, link up transit to it in such a way, and not just, not just buses, but also trains and light rail. We rode, we rode buses, we rode trains, we rode light rail. We even rode a, a streetcar as an example for different neighborhoods and in and around the Salt Lake City area, south, south of there as well. The fifteen-minute city is essentially, they plan it in such a way to where folks can get to basically anything you do work a day, get to work, get to school, get to shopping, get to some form of entertainment, or get to a transit facility all on foot or by within fifteen minutes. And that's been quite successful out there. Let me see here, some of the notes I took while bouncing down on a train. They are addressing equity issues by linking neighborhoods to transit and trails. And then it's, it's funny, when they do some of the surveys, they involve the community when they're building these developments. The developers received requests for amenities, you know, that it's, it's, it's kind of convenient to be able to put a, a gym in a building, but they, they just sit there and the equipment gathers dust and, just like my Nordic trek. And I understand how that goes, but they can say they have one. But their biggest request, number one was a coffee shop, number two was ice cream, and number three was pizza. That's what they want.
Bingo?
No, bingo. They got a room for it, though. The number, the number one indicator of success story for the transit-oriented development was including a grocery store. And I know when we went to Washington, D. C. On the pre-trip, once again with Secog, the, the developments that we saw that were, were considered successful did include a grocery store. But I tell you, you drive down the road, you wouldn't know it. You look, it looks like you're driving through like a, a modern Victorian city neighborhood that tucked back in the corner underneath, and it's all, and even the parking garages are disguised. There is a big grocery store. So folks can, you don't just walk to the corner market. You go, and you can get everything. And within a hundred yards, you're home or whatever. So I mean, that is kind of neat, really. Salt Lake City, I was really surprised. They, they called it, they refer to it as Small Lake City themselves. Because even though it looks like a big city, the population-wise and the demographic and whatnot, very similar to Sacramento area. And U. B. City even had a, our, our, our meeting housing was the same as Salt Lake City, within a few thousand dollars. So I think that was obviously some of the motive for, that's why we chose that area. And one interesting fact for Salt Lake City, in the metro area, it's the best in the country for upward mobility. And the fact that the figures they gave us was if you were born, if someone was born in the lower twenty percent of socioeconomic status, they have the highest likelihood to die in the top twenty percent. And so through, through your life, you know, maybe not the choice of words, you're born and die. But however, you have a higher likelihood to get up to that top twenty percent of socioeconomic status right there in Salt Lake City. The major part is transit. And not necessarily vehicles, but the, the public transit because you create access. And you provide access to these folks, and they can get out there and hopefully thrive. I could go on and on, but it, it was very interesting. They were very, very professional. Some of the takeaways was, and this is similar to what we, what we learned in Washington, D. C. Was as us as electeds and the city and counties, as they develop or have plans for development, is to, what they learned was to stick to their plan, hold to it, and, and, and don't settle for anything less. A lot of their elected officials, they, that was remarkable, was that they owned, they had, this is our plan. Like, we have the M. T. P. S. S. Down in, in Secog, but they embraced it, they touted it, they promoted it, and they considered this is ours. And they tell the state, you know what? We got this. And this, and they gave state pushback. And the state finally said, okay, but we got to see results. No problem. And they, they've proven that they can do that. So it was a very good, very good trip, very good people, learned a lot, saw a lot. And hopefully, we can take some of those lessons learned and apply them here. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good to have you back as well. So, Councilmember V. Garden.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kind of a busy couple of weeks for me. I know, first I'll talk about SURF, which is the Community Economic Resilience Fund. And Councilwoman Espandola and I, the city manager, Doug Libby, Ben Moody, have all been participating in a process. And just to give you a quick snapshot, this is a one-time use of state general funds that will distribute six hundred million dollars to regions. There are thirteen regions in the state. We are one with eight other, excuse me, seven other counties. Lot, sort of in the same general vicinity as, as Secog. The objectives are to promote equitable and sustainable economic development, support inclusive economic planning that prioritizes equity, job quality, and sustainability, and to align and leverage federal and state funding to maximize economic resilience. Of course, one of the biggest concerns here is one that I'm sure that we've dealt with with Secog as well is, does, does the funding end up in the major metro, i.e. Sacramento, or, or one of the bigger counties? So that's been a, a big concern. We're working with some really good consultants, Valley Vision, Lon Hata Meeah, who's a very familiar name to the area. There's some subcommittees that are concluding their work. And, and I'm, you know, I'm excited for what this might bring to the city as far as, again, some planning and some economic development. Second thing I want to talk about is, in the regional housing authority, Mr. Curlin is a commissioner along with myself. I think you'll find that these, these notes are important. These are affordable housing. And you've probably heard me over time ask many, many times, what, what does affordable housing really mean? And we received a report from Mr. Becerra. The, the average monthly asking rent in, in Sutter County is eleven hundred and five dollars. Okay? That means, through the, the studies that was presented to us, that a, a renter needs to make twenty-one dollars and twenty-five cents an hour to be able to afford a, to rent, which is one point four times the state's current minimum wage. So when you start talking about affordable housing and you look at, you know, what our average wage probably is in this area, you can find where, where the delta is. And so again, I know this council is extremely interested in trying to continue to provide a stock of affordable housing, which leads me to the Project Home Key meetings, which we continue to be involved with. And there, at the most recent meeting, we had the opportunity to listen directly to representatives, representatives from housing and community development. And while I think the, the notion of, of, of trying to provide affordable housing, especially as it relates to veterans and it relates to senior citizens, and our senior commission, we've brought that issue up at several meetings because the issue with senior citizens is they're being displaced by higher rents. And these folks are good, good renters. They're not the types of renters that are going to generally go in and, and not treat property well. But Project Home Key, the, the, the meetings continue. We have another one tomorrow morning. There are a few things that continue to concern us as a council that we'll be reporting back on. Of course, the fact that Project Home Key three point O. Looks to be another one of the fifty-five-year commitments. And with that, obviously, that, that's something that we need to make sure as a city that, you know, if we get involved with the Project Home Key, which could very well happen, that we really understand what that fifty-five-year commitment is. And housing and community development reps were pretty clear that, that those commitments are pretty strict for the fifty-five years. And it's interesting, Project Home Key's only been in place now since twenty twenty, so it's a pretty fresh program. But it is an option, and it's one that we continue to explore and look forward to, again, continuing meetings. Again, the application period's in October, so we have a little bit of time to continue to figure out where we're going with that. LAFCO was canceled. Burlington Coat Factory, it's always, I think, pretty, pretty good to see the, the volume of businesses that are coming to U. B. City. And the opportunity to present these ribbon cuttings, I think, is really good. With that, that concludes my report. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So with Homeless Task Force, we have our, we're narrowing down our final list of locations that we're looking at for overnight parking for homeless, so we can give our law enforcement the tools that they need. In that arena, we've got one more meeting to go. And hopefully, at that meeting, the committee members, community committee members will have agreed upon a list of hopefully two to three that we can bring back to council and take a look at. What was brought up earlier about the importance of access to the river was a pretty good segue into what Sabuca's been doing lately. Not only do we need access to the river, we need access in the river. And this point last year, there was a dredger parked out in the middle of the river that was funded through a five million dollar grant to clear up access at the U. B. City Boat Ramp because boaters essentially couldn't get their boats in the river. And so something that was looked at was an additional Feather River Sediment Project Two. And we were looking at hopefully getting ten million for that. Senator Nielsen and Assemblyman Gallagher were wholeheartedly behind it. Unfortunately, it was not on the, the budget this year. So we're going to go back to the drawing board on that. Mosquito baitment, we took a look at merit increases for employees, quartered the review of the district, district-defined benefits plan, and then finalized budget approval for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. Intergovernmental Relations Committee was postponed this month. And what was, lastly, it was good to see another business go into the mall, Burlington. And with that, I'll close.
All right, thank you. I'll bring it back to me, and I'll try to be very brief tonight. Since our last meeting with me, it's, it seems to be a continuous meeting every week. I remember what you told me. It was coming. So it's there. But I did attend Sabuca, because you had a conflict there at the last minute and asked me. Not only on, you know, just the sediment removal, but just a couple of other notable things that are ongoing. The FEMA map remapping has been completed with Sutter County and Butte County. And then also the other noteworthy item that came out of that was we all just voted on the new assessment district. And that vote did pass narrowly by about fifty-two percent. So what does that mean? The big two words, local control versus Sacramento. So that was the big push there. So that was the big takeaways from there. And Vice Mayor, you're doing a good job there. I don't think they were quite excited to see me as you, but, but we made it. So Burlington, of course, great to see them and welcome them to town. And I want to say something here that I said at the, the ribbon cutting with fellow council members. And it's not just the few businesses that's going in there, but really want to say thank you to the ownership and the leadership of the U. B. City Mall, how they're redeveloping that and attracting new businesses. We just came through a pandemic where a lot of communities lost a lot of brick-and-mortar businesses, and they seem to be reinventing that mall. So we thanked them there, and I just want to go on record tonight saying thank you because they're, they're doing a lot of great things there. The overnight parking to assist our law enforcement officers. Recap the meetings we've been. We've had really three thus far. The first one was understanding that we needed an overnight parking. And they all, they all came on board and understand the need for that. The second one was looking at rules and what needs to go on there because we heard some concerns from the community and others with what's going to be the rules. And so we've been working through that, and that is going under review as well by our legal counsel as well as the county legal counsel. Then we hit the point in time that I kind of knew that we would probably hit. And that's the reality of selecting the recommendation because they're going to make, the, hopefully, the outcome of this is they make a recommendation to come back before the two bodies to figure out what we're going to do. Hit the wall just like we did the very first time. So it's, there is not an ideal location. If we sat down and look at it, every location, you can pick it apart. So with that, didn't go out of there disappointed, just went out of there with, you know what? Next meeting, we've got to make some decisions. You got a few weeks now to go back and think about it. If you come up with something that's the greatest thing since sliced bread, bring it because we'll talk about that. But go talk to the landowner first or whatnot to make sure it's a viable option. So the idea is to hopefully come out of the last meeting, hopefully that will be the last one for this part of it. And then late August, second meeting of August, bring back hopefully a recommendation from, from that community advisory panel. And hopefully, it can go to the county soup's and us about the same time. from that community advisory panel, and, uh, hopefully it can go to the county soup's and us about the same time, and then we can figure out what we're going to do, because, uh, as I told them, uh, at the last meeting, still go back to the same beginnings, doing nothing's not an option. So we can't go through these meetings and come out of here and go, we've got nothing. We're going to have to work together with our community and figure out how we address this because we have an overwhelming community problem that we're dealing with, and that is the issue of, of homelessness. And again, what we've stated here, homelessness is not a crime. It's a problem, it's an issue. We've gotta get help to those that want help, and we'll receive it, and we gotta figure all this other stuff out. We're commonly unique, like all the other cities and counties in California. We're all trying to figure this out, and no one has the, the right answer yet or the complete answer. So we're working through it, and that's the expectations, uh, coming back. A lot of things coming up this week. Uh, we will have transit and RWMA, RWMA, we're looking for the new executive, uh, director there, so hopefully, uh, that will all come together finally. Um, and then, um, two things, I wanna do the one. Um, uh, this afternoon I had the, uh, privilege of attending, uh, Cotton Rossers', uh, memorial service, and I will tell you, three hours of laughing and crying because, uh, I don't really know if our community as a whole in this region understands what kind of a man and what kind of a legend he really was. But, uh, we have one gem of a family in the Rossers, and, uh, I just would, during this time, especially with the stampede and stuff coming up in a couple of months, uh, I think our community needs to just reach out and embrace the Rossers, the Flying Urodeo. Um, there were people that flew in from all over the country there today. So, uh, you know, as, I don't have my hat, but as Cotton would do, he would tip it. And, uh, you know, as the, they said, live like cotton. My last comments, um, I want to, um, thank our city employees. Uh, they always do a great job from PD to Public Works, and because they support each agency or each division of our, of our municipality, uh, there's not a one that can't do it without the other, so it takes us all. Uh, but I had the opportunity this week, and just wanna say thank you to, um, to our fire department. Uh, I know the Fourth of July, we had a, uh, situation on Pluma Street that could've got out of control, and it took some creative out-of-the-box thinking to make sure that was all contained. And then, uh, just this past week, I was leaving my office, looked left, looked right, and all I saw was a big poof of, uh, black smoke. And it was down by AK School, went down there, and I personally watched these guys keep this fire contained. I talked to the former chief here, and he's like, yep, that's what these guys do, and they're very good at it. And I just didn't want it to, uh, to go unacknowledged, that, uh, that's two incidences, and I had the privilege of witnessing how they worked on the last one because they contained it to a single, single unit. So, um, Chief Alexander, please pass that along to your, your crews because, uh, y- you have some great guys there, and they are supported by everybody else in the city. So thank you across the board, and with that, uh, if there's nothing else, then we will stand adjourned.